City Council meeting in the city of Chavano Park to order. Maggie Couts will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Conrad Kirkedahl will lead us in the invocation. If you'd all please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for another day. Help us to make good decisions for this community for a long period of time. And bless those individuals who have been affected by the flooding, victims, and those that have helped out up there. Thank you. Amen.
Item number four, City Council comments. Lee.
I'd like to thank everybody for attending. Nice crowd out there and I'm sure we're all looking forward to a delightful August.
Pete.
Yeah, so unfortunately, summer is starting to come to an end. And as August unfolds, a lot of families are going to be preparing for the school season. So I think it's always a good reminder to remember the safety ideas that we're going to have a lot of people going back to school and the cautions that we need to take.
Conrad.
Good to see everyone out there.
Maggie.
Thank everyone for coming and keep our world in your prayers and our friends in Texas of love in your prayers and just keep yourselves in your prayers. Thank you.
And Buddy.
Just welcome everyone.
Thank you. Item number five, presentation, commendations and announcements. Item 5.1, recognition, excellence in performance for a city employee 2025, second quarter employee of the quarter recipient, fire and paramedic Rolando Rowley Salinas. Chief.
Sir, we're skipping this item. He's not available today.
Okay. Okay, item 5.2, recognition, Independence Day sponsors. One of the things in Chavano Park that I think that we do very well is our community events. The outreach that we make for young families is noteworthy. There have been over a dozen families that I've talked to at our community events who have said, golly, I came to your community event and I decided that Chavano Park was the place that I needed to bring my family to live. It's one of those special places where the police drive by your house every hour to two hours, 365 days a year, a place that you can let your kids go at nine o'clock in the morning and come back at five o'clock to six o'clock and have dinner with them. It's that place where the EMS shows up for that 50% of our community that's 65 and over. And where in the last 10 years, we've had 27 people who have died, who have not been in nursing homes, in rehab, in the hospital after we've transported them, but have actually died in our community, which is absolutely positively remarkable when you think about the fact that Chavano Park has got about 1,600 people that are 65 and over. I don't think we have the fountain of youth here, but Johnny keeps telling us that our water is great and we probably are the fountain of youth. Those community events that we do every year would not happen without our sponsors. You who are the sponsors in this community, make those events richer for the experience. We are blessed to have you as corporate citizens here in Chavano Park. Our citizens know you and they appreciate you and everybody on the council that sits behind the dais appreciates you as well. Whether you're Martin Marietta, and I know that Martin Marietta, you guys have been with us going all the way back to the settlement agreement that we entered into with Martin Marietta about 1999, 2000. And y'all have been an absolutely amazing corporate partner with us. We have some newer folks, the bundcake lady is here and by golly, she brought treats for the city council. And I'm thinking that those two little girls that are sitting in the audience need to make sure that they make their way over to that wall before they leave here this evening because by golly, Pete Miller and I are watching our figures and if you help us out, we would very much, I'm sorry, Pete, are you still watching your figure? Okay. Pete and I are watching our figures and we would very much appreciate you maybe taking our bundcake with you. But at this time, I would, I'd like to have each one of you come forward and have a picture with the city manager and me and receive a proclamation on behalf of the city. And I'm going to read the first proclamation. The rest of them are pretty well the same. Whereas the city of Chavano Park is proud to recognize and celebrate the generous contributions of local businesses and organizations and whereas Collier Engineering and Design, a valued member of our community, has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to supporting the city's initiatives and fostering community spirit and whereas Collier's made a significant monetary donation to enhance the success and excitement in the Independence Day event, thereby enhancing the experience of our residents and promoting civic engagement and whereas Collier's sponsorship of the food was enthusiastically received as a part of the Independence Day event. Now therefore, I, Robert B. Warner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, hereby issue the proclamation to commend and express our heartfelt gratitude to Collier's engineering and design for their dedication to our city. So Chris, why don't you come forward and then we will get everybody else to come forward. Bill, if you would come forward too.
Can't forget the lights.
Okay, next I've got Martin Marietta, Jeremy Smith and Jason Towne. Would you guys come forward?
Yes, indeed.
Martin Marietta has been just a partner with the city of Chavano Park for absolutely ever and they have from sponsoring the angle barbecue to today and they have made so much of this. Thank you so very much for all that you guys did.
Indeed.
See, nothing but cakes. Thank you for working out for me. We really appreciate you.
Good job.
Art Forest Industries, Dr. Ross.
No, 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 no. I don't want to speak. Come on. Come on.
Yay.
Thanks so much.
Sure, yeah, because I want to, okay, thank you.
Come on, come on. And we'll take extra pictures, please, please.
Good job.
Rock. And ladies, don't forget your bundcakes. Oh, by the way, your mom and dad have a special dinner prepared for you all this evening and you'll be able to leave as soon as we get through the right vision board, so you don't have to say. Pat, Jim here? Nope. And then finally, the last proclamation we have is John, come on up, San Antonio Radio Club.
Oh, indeed.
San Antonio Radio Club, 104 years and it seems like it's about 20 something years ago, coming to the city of Chavano Park. They call it the city of San Antonio Radio Club, but it's really the Chavano Park Radio Club and we like it that way.
Can I, if I may?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly, since 2003, San Antonio Radio Club has been coming here to Chavano Park for our annual field day. And city of Chavano Park has been so gracious over the years and we very much thank you so much for everything. And we'd like to present to you from the San Antonio Radio Club, the President Certificate of Appreciation to the city of Chavano Park.
Thank you very much.
That's part of love, dude.
Yeah, very much. All right. The city of Chavano Park and the city council of Chavano Park, we greatly appreciate y'all's recognition of the city of Chavano Park. Thank you very much and look forward to having you back. Make sure that you get with Kristen here soon and spend later to make your reservations for next year. Pop, we're going to learn Morse code. That's, I'm more on, dot, dot, dot.
Hey, there's Morse code on that certificate.
Yeah. Not dot, dot, it's a D.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming out to be recognized by the city of Chavano Park. Thank you for all that you do in our community and keep up the great work. Thank you for giving us great smiles in Chavano Park, Carlos. Item number six, consent agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to accept and/or approve items 6.1 through 6.6? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Item number seven, city managers report, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more alderman. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur at the end of the regular agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any of items 7.1 through 7.6? There being no request. Brings us to item number eight. 8.1, discussion action ordinance O 2025-010, amending appendix A fee schedule for the city of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to provide updated administrative building permit and emergency medical fees. Curtis and Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start off by apologizing. I have a bunch of slides that are very dull, lots of numbers that start us off tonight. But the city traditionally placed all its fees in an ordinance in our fee schedule in one place and it's called appendix A. And the past, we try to review it from time to time, make sure it's meeting the expenses. All these fees are meant to defray costs from actually giving out services to residents, processing permits and all these such like that. Every city department was asked to review it. The last time we reviewed it was January 2024 and this is our next annual review. I'll have these organized kind of into chunks. I'll just try to move through these relatively quickly. If there's at any point you have a question on what I'm presenting, don't be, you can go ahead and stop me. Administrative fees, so this was already briefed, but the city credit card transaction fee, we propose to increase it to 2.5 to 4% to match the cost from the credit card companies that Brenda's reports is actually we're being charged. This next bullet we're striking, we'll remove it and we'll ask to, in the motion, this is the first reading, but to remove it from your motion, this proposed delinquent payment collections via 30%. Moving on to the platting fees, the amending plat, there's existing, it costs $100 and there's actually two tiers with this. It could just be bill's approval, city manager approval. And then there's a tier where it actually has to go to planning and zoning and the city council, basically like a replat, but you skip the public hearing. Well, $100 for the process where you have to go, you have to convene P and Z, you have to convene city council to hear these. And we actually think it should be $350, same as a replat, 100 bucks though, if it's just with the city manager. City engineer review fees, which have not been updated since I've worked here over a decade, there's $300, propose increasing that to $400 after we got our new 2025 city engineer rates. That was our first rate increase we've seen in our contract since 2016. On miscellaneous permits, we have garage sale, we have estate sale, we're not suggesting anything with garage sale. Estate sales, though, we are proposing remove from $50 to $100. These are, in our estimation, very large, draw crowds. We've had our police called out sometimes to these. They're much more money-making operations than just a garage sale. Under dog registration fees, we added annual clarification, all these fees are annual that people have to pay if their dogs are deemed by the court to be dangerous, aggressive or nuisances. These registration fees we propose increasing on by $50. They were 50, moving so 50 to 100, 100 to 150, 150 or 200 to 250. And that is based on our experience with the amount of time our police spent on one of the, just one or two of these dogs. $50 is a reasonable increase on that. The prevailing fees, you can see change in the ordinances, that's just if, we must have had some point some inconsistency between what the ordinance said and our policy said. If you go to our website and looked at the policy, which we tell people to pay, they didn't match the numbers in this, so we just fixed that inconsistency there. All right, moving to development services permitting fees. A lot of changes under this, but most of these are very small changes in the scheme of things, but. So building inspector inspection fee, we got a letter from BB increasing the rate from 50 to 60. We're just imposed to pass that cost on. We said the minimum commercial plan review fee of 150, there is no minimum right now, it's just 40% of the permit cost. Basically, if you have a commercial of any type, the minimum is 150 bucks, so you have BB review it. It said, we don't have right now any expedited plan review fee, but people ask for expedited plan reviews. Basically BB, from my understanding, they charge a little higher rate. They're promising they'll get it around in like two to three days versus a normal five to seven. That's really what expedite is doing. Establishing a true fee that's very transparent at $250, if you want this quick way to pass through. Adding new commercial fire alarm sprinkler fees at flat $250 instead of just on the scale of the percent, right now our commercial building permits, unlike our residential building permits, are based on the valuation. So if it's a $10,000 project, you charge this, if it's a $50,000 project, charge this. Residential is all broken out. Where we're talking about commercial here though, a flat 250 because the complexity of even on it might be a relatively small value, these are, can be relatively complex systems to have to inspect. Added a new general fire inspection fee, so this is not, $50 for normal, 150 outside normal business hours. This is not annual fire inspections. This is a, we had nothing in our back pocket. If there was something that arose at a building and the fire marshal was having to go out or any of the fire inspectors were having to go out and do inspections, there'd be any charge. So proposed $50, 150 if it has to be outside normal business hours. The certificate of occupancy fees, which have not been changed since, again, at least 10 years, propose moving all those by $100. So most of the types is 100 bucks and there's different CFOs can be triggered by, for the shell building, for the individual leases of the building, leases of the overall building, when a business changes ownership of a lease, most of those are moving by 100 bucks. And the commercial building permit fees, so this is where we have that large table in ordinance with all the valuations. We hadn't looked at that since 2018. We last did the analysis. We did it with five cities and determined the city is below the average of what all these cities were charging. So the changes in the table, I'll go to the next slide, you can see the actual impact for different, we did examples of what different valuations, commercial permits. But in the real scheme of things, we're talking about raising minimum permit fees from $50 to $100, minor increases of $100, $150 in some of those tiers and the flat fees. And when you get to the really large buildings, really large projects, we're increasing the multiplier from $3.65 per $1,000 to $4. And what that means though, is this is example, at the very top is Chavano Park today, right below it, Chavano Park update, so under this proposal, if the permit was to come in and at every single tier except the lowest, the city was below the average of five other cities we looked at. So this, so you can see on a $50,000 project, the proposal would increase it by $100, bringing us to about the average of 8.35 of the five cities. Some cities are above us, some are below us. Same with $100,000 commercial permit, this could be electrical job, HVAC job, a building, an accessory building, you name it, 1,000 to 1,300 and so on and so forth. It would go all the way in 10 million there, that's where the numbers change the most, but at $38,460 to $43,000, which brings us about to the average. So that was our goal to just, to make it so that we're charging on the average of what other cities are charging for these exact same projects. And the residential building permit fees, so last year in ordinance, we made some edits to our cost per square footage for the new residential construction. We didn't look last year at a lot of the individual smaller projects and that's what we tried to focus on this. So the increase, so 87 cents per square foot has been the cost for residential remodel since we moved to, Texas law banned it, so we couldn't use valuations residential. That was like 2017, I think, 2018. We proposed moving that to a dollar, which is still, a new building is a $1.40 per square foot. So this move from 87 cents to a dollar. $50 cost increase on driveways. And so these numbers are what it would be the proposal. So driveway today is 150, move the 200. So fences today is 150, would be the 200, masonry wall 250, a roof 200, swimming pool 650, cabana 300, sports court 300. $50 increase to electrical plumbing HVAC permits under new residences. And again, in the ordinance, you can, if you look through it, you can see these are broken out into the different disciplines, so HVAC, electrical, plumbing. So under each one of those categories, remodels, swimming pools, fire sprinklers, gas lines, GTOs, these type of things are, not all of them are being proposed at $50. And we did some cleanup here as well, deleting some old duplicated roofing fence and driveway patio deck permit language there. All right, and here with the EMS fees, and I'll let Darrell speak on this, but this was last analyzed by staff in 2018 and Darrell looked at nine jurisdictions.
Thank you, sir. As Curtis mentioned, we last evaluated our EMS fees in 2018 as Chief Naughton was retiring and we were going to a third party that was going to continue our billing for EMS fees. At that time, we were right in line with what the other agencies in our city, in our area were charging. In evaluating everything recently, we found that we were considerably lower than most of the EMS providers in our area. As you're well aware, the costs have increased for medical supplies, of course, for keeping paramedics and operating as a system. Our tax dollars paid to provide the service to our residents, however, there is a fee for service and that is what this is. I presented my numbers to Curtis, we worked out an average and we're looking at minimizing the fee to our residents with a small incremental increase of basically about $100 for use of service. We will not change the fee for our residents if they call us out and they are not transported, which was a treatment, no transport is the way it is labeled with our billing service. This will increase though to non-residents, we'll see the bulk of the increase going to them. And that will be an average of about $1,400 per call where we were previously at about $1,000 per EMS call. Depending on the nature of the emergency and what services are provided, would, there was a little bit of fluctuation there in what we were charging as well. So we're proposing an increase to $1,400 for non-residents. The bulk of our EMS calls are coming from our skilled nursing facilities and our assisted living facilities. These are not taxpayers per se, but they are responsible for the bulk of our emergency responses. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance O 2025-010, amending appendix A fee schedule for the city of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to establish updated administrative building permit and emergency medical fees. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. Before I turn it over to council, I'll turn it back over to Bill. Bill, is there anything that you'd like to add to this at this time?
No, I think they did a good job. I looked in detail at the different responses that were done. It's all supported. I think some of that was in your backup material, but it seems to be fair.
Okay. Okay, we're now open for discussion. Lee.
Just a clarification, if I may. Slide number one, where you, just below the middle of the page, you had $300 to $400 increase for engineer review. That's a simple pass through, is it not? I mean, we get charged? Who gets charged?
Yes, yes, it is, it is a pass through, yes. And they're increasing their rates.
And all we're doing is.
They're getting, they charge us based on hourly, right? So it's to capture that rate increase that's happening there.
Who writes them a check before and now?
This, well.
You do, okay.
So on plats, so they're under plats.
I get to counter sign them if they're over $5,000. You know, Bill signs them, but I get to counter sign them sometimes.
Okay, okay. Now, all it is is a pass through, nothing new.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Pete.
Yeah, Chief Dover, I think it was a couple of years ago, you did a presentation on the EMS non-collectible fees that have, in the past, so just of, and I don't need the exact number, but just wanted to know, is that still, is the non-collectible fees that we get on the EMS, is it still relatively high?
It's not as high as it was. We are working with MB, MB Law, MBA Law, that is assessing our, they're taking care of our collections. We have seen an increase in the last couple of years where we are getting more money back in now as they are handling that. I can't speak to the actual numbers. I would have to get with Brenda and we can certainly provide that next time.
But it's still an issue.
It is, yes.
And then the other question I had is, you actually made reference to billing that happens within Chavano Park and then for residents and then for non-residents, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the non-residents would happen if there was an accident or something on like Northwest Military and then we had to respond to that, is that?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Buddy.
Yeah, Curtis and Chief, I know that some of these fees that the increase were compared to some of the other municipalities, are we actually covering our cost?
Yes.
Or is it symbolic?
It's difficult to gauge some of these costs because they're spread across payroll, they're spread across these healthcare costs that we just saw in the workshop and whatnot when you're talking about the time of employees that do some of these things. But we think that this is a very fair way, these cost increases we're proposing across a number of these is a very fair way to recompensate, to measure the increased costs to employ people and these services.
In the instance of the EMS fees, it's a costly service to provide to our residents. However, it's an amazing service that we are able to provide. Unfortunately, without a tremendous, putting a tremendous burden on the patient, it'd be extremely difficult for us to have a windfall there to where this is really just softening the blow, for lack of better words, on the EMS fees.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else before I ask my questions? Chief, on our EMS fees, how do these compare with the city of San Antonio? You know, you have an accident in San Antonio, how much is San Antonio going to send you a bill for, for a non-transport emergency event?
We will still be under what the city of San Antonio is charging. The city of San Antonio charges a flat fee of $1,500. However, they do assess fees for different medications that they use and they have a itemized billing plan that goes along with their set fee. The city of San Antonio, the city of Leon Valley, believe the city of Converse has a luxury that we don't have. They're able to get state monies to offset their operating costs because there's a percentage of their residents that fall. percentage of their residents that fall below, I can't say if it's the poverty line or lower income, so they're actually augmented by state fees that they're allowed to collect as well.
Okay. Could you justify charging the City of San Antonio rates for the non-residents that we have to have calls for in Chavano Park?
In my mind, we certainly could. We're just about a hundred dollars off. We're proposing 1,400 dollars, where San Antonio is currently charging 1,500 dollars. We took the average, we looked at Bear County ESD II, Bolverde Spring Branch EMS, Wilson County EMS, New Braunfels, Leon Valley, Converse, San Antonio, Halotas, Alamo Heights, and Shirts, to get our evaluation and to look at where we compared with those other cities and departments. And the average came out to that 1,400 dollar mark.
Okay. And when you look at San Antonio on their treat, not transport, cost, the TNT cost, what are they charging for the TNT?
San Antonio is currently charging 100 dollars.
That's all?
That's all.
So, they're catching most of theirs on the 1,500 dollar side, because they have more serious stuff going on for non-residents, I suppose.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
A question, we're increasing the inside residential work permits. Bill, I thought that we charged permits for electrical and plumbing on inside. I didn't realize that when somebody was changing sheetrock out in their house, that they were required to get a permit.
Yeah, they're not.
Okay. The reference includes sheetrock work and stuff like that, so I've just, I was surprised to see that. I would just, would like to make sure that, I just want to make sure that the handyman that live in Chavano Park shouldn't be having to get permits to be able to do that.
No, these proposals do not increase the scope of what we're requiring for a permit. I mean, if you use the word, we have it in there as all improvements remodels, but those are remodels that, you're not talking about just changing out your drywall or redoing your ceiling. These are significant, we have to redo plumbing and electrical.
Yeah, so it's electrical plumbing that we're regulating, not your, you might actually take down a wall and not have to get a permit under this unless you were moving electrical on that wall or plumbing. Okay, I just wanted to have that clarified. Back years ago, Bill, six years probably now, seven years possibly, we looked at the roofing fee, and we were charging exorbitant numbers based upon the cost of the renovations, and we came to the idea of, well, you know, we want to know who your roofers are, so that we, we have a list of our people that have registered with us, and we know a little bit about them, as opposed to the gypsy roofer that comes into town, and we're really regulating it from the standpoint of the gypsy roofer that comes into town. Does it cost any more to have those people registered today to justify an increase from 150 to 200 dollars? Because I had a new roof put on, and nobody ever showed up at my house. You know, and I'm sure that probably most of us have had a roof replaced in the time that Lee and Maggie and maybe Conrad and Buddy, I don't think you've lived in here long enough, Pete, to have to replace a roof, but nobody comes out to do any type of inspection. This is an administrative cost, and we may just be making work for ourselves in doing this, is 200 dollars a number that we could justify for nobody that does anything other than, hey, we have a system of knowing who the roofers are that are in Chavano Park? That's just a question.
Well, there is a permit review fee. I don't know exactly what that costs. Did we look at roofs, Curtis?
No, we didn't compare what a roof permit would cost in the different jurisdictions.
I mean, I know there's a permit review fee from B&amp;B. It's probably 100 dollars, and, because I think that's the minimum that they charge. And then, we spend time doing it. Is it critical that we move from 150 to 200? No, we can keep it at 150.
Yeah, we just had a lot of people that were upset in the old day, and raising fees, sometimes people look at that, it's like, well, what did I get for my 200 dollars? And I know that B&amp;B is doing a great job out there for us, but just a question. Driveways, we talk about driveways. I know that we regulate concrete driveways, asphalt driveways. I had one asphalt guy that came through Chavano Park, and I must have gotten 10 complaints about him, which would have been nice if we'd all had some type, that he'd been registered with the city, gotten building permits, so every one of us might have known that we had a shyster.
I probably provided you wrong information at one point in time, because we do permit asphalt driveways now.
Okay.
And so, that person was actually cited for not getting a permit, not being registered, and so forth.
Well, I know of multiple driveways that he did without getting any one of us permitted, so...
Understood.
But I'm happy to pay the permit fee for my driveway, now that I know that I should have gotten one. Okay, my final question is, the 30% collection fee, Bill, is that something that we're...
We've eliminated that.
We're pulling that, and so, that is in the schedule, and so, you would be asking that we modify the motion to remove the 30% collection fee, is that correct?
You can do that, it's also the first reading, so we're gonna delete it in a second.
Lee, do you want to eliminate that?
I'll avoid the second reading.
Okay. So, Bill, so your motion would be to come back with a modified fee schedule to be showing changes recommended by the city manager? And Maggie, would you consent to that modification of the motion? Okay. So, if there's no further discussion, questions, or comments, it brings us back to the fee schedule. We have a motion to approve ordinance O-2025010, amending Appendix A fee schedule to the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to Establish Updated Administrative Building Permit and Emergency Medical Fees as a first reading to show interlineated modifications as recommended by the city council, by the city manager for the second reading of the motion. Is that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Curtis. Item 8.2, Discussion, Action, Authorization of the City Manager to Negotiate the Sale of Approximately .6426 Acres of City Green Belt Property Adjacent to 202 Box Oak, Chavano Park. Bill?
Yes, sir, and I just want to make sure I point out that the engineer working on this project, Alan Gralletta, is here. I don't know if I pronounced it right, so if we have any further questions, we can refer to him. But the property owner at 202 Box Oak, which is in Chavano Creek, who lives at the end of a cul-de-sac, approached us in 2020 about possibly buying some property. Curtis and I actually went to that lot, we walked the lot with the property owner in 2020, and we said, "Hey, you need to do a survey, get the specifics out, and then we can take it to city council." We'll fast forward. We got contacted again this spring, and this time, he had engaged with an engineer, who engaged with a survey team. They went out and staked the property. I went back out there, walked it with Alan, and they completed a survey, which essentially is going to be .64 acres that they are proposing to buy from one of our green belts. And this green belt exists between the estates and Chavano Creek, out of a 13, almost 14-acre lot. The land is mostly, that 14 acres is mostly floodplains, and there's some hills in there. It's mostly completely grown up with cedars, almost impossible to walk in from there. I think we have a slide that shows it. Right there on the left, right at the, not the point of the arrow, but where the arrow originates is actually where the property is. And then, you can see it on the right, you can see it a little bit better where that red dot is there. Let me orient you to this survey here. The dotted black line, which got two little circles and looks little dots, is actually a fence that's there. As it turns out, the fence is not completely accurately built on the property line. The property line is that green line that goes from the bottom left towards the top right, in green line. And the owner would like to purchase it from that line, and then around in that oval area, which makes .64 acres. What that really is, is it's a kind of a finger that extends on some property that he built out. And so, on, and that, the one on the right is the easiest way to see it. That little finger is just, you can see there's a tennis court, there are some sort of court there. It's the area to the southwest of that, to the east of, I'm sorry, the east of it. But that little finger is, it's kind of a ridge that, it's sloped, it's got 15, 20 feet of elevation difference on it, and it just kind of naturally extends. That's what he's looking to purchase the property for. And as I understand it, he doesn't intend to develop on it. It's not very wide, and so, there would be, it's also, and the entire area is governed by a drainage and sewage easement. So, when you have a drainage easement, you typically can't build on it unless you have explicit permission to do so. And when you look at that 14 acres, which is the, not pink, but the peach-colored map with the blue outline, that is in where almost basin and the water floods from, basically comes down, and it distributes from Pond Hill and across from Lock Hill-Selma, down through Bentley Manor, down through Chavano Creek, and then ultimately under Hubner Road there. So, if you look at, well, how does this piece fit into the property? The city owns about six or seven properties inside between the estates and Chavano Creek. So, it's not all, it's all contiguous as well, but they're different properties, there are like six or seven of them. The only potential use that the city would have, which its natural use is to distribute water through runoff, stormwater runoff, it naturally does that. We have an interest in keeping it hazard-free, and making sure there's no, nothing that would flood in it. You could, if you stretched it, what could possibly be done in all of that area in the future, for some other city council and city manager, is you could possibly put in a Salado Creek type of a green, a walkway through there. This property would not interfere with that at all, because if you're looking on the right-hand slide, the area in which is flat at where the water is distributed would be to the right of this. It would go through that channel up onto the right there. So, you know, even if the city had some reason to do something with these properties, this would be beyond the scope. You would never design the trail to go over this hump like that. So, there's really nothing that prevents the city from considering doing this. It would add value to the property that's there. I think he wants to use it just kind of, you might clear it out a little bit and make it a little bit more enjoyable to see and relax in his backyard. But there's, I can't think of a single disadvantage to doing this, or how it might handicap us in the future. I've thought through this a long time, Curtis and I have both been out there, I've been out there multiple times. It just seems like it would be a win-win for the resident. We're asking that you authorize the city manager to enter into negotiation, so we could, we can contract this out. We'll look for some compensation for that, and we can talk about that offline if you have different thoughts on that. But I would negotiate that, similar to how we negotiated the sale of the lot across the street, it's not developed, so you can do, you can use a pre-existing contract and work through it that way.
Okay. I do have one question, Bill, before I entertain, before we entertain a motion. And that is, Curtis, if you could go back to the first slide where the protrusion is shown, and it's got the dotted line, and then it's got that one right there. The survey that is included, the fence is actually beyond the property owner's boundary is what this looks like, I think is what you've said, Bill.
I think we just discovered that in the last couple of weeks, once that survey was done.
Yeah, and I just wanted to confirm that that was the case, which means that as far as the city is concerned, he's got a fence there, and he's been a decent neighbor, we would probably always want to sell him the amount that's inside of his fence. One of the vagaries of Texas law is that you cannot take property from a municipality by adverse possession. So, the good and lose is, we still own that piece of property, but we probably don't want it. And so, my observation is, whether we let him have all of it or just that portion of it, we want to let him have some of it. Well, the six tenths of an acre, part of it's inside the fence line, so... Yeah, no, that was what I was just confirming with, Bill, that is within the .6426. Alan, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct.
Okay. So...
Yeah, one thing I want to clarify, I have two...
Please, please, I invite you as a presenter to come to the dais. Alan, if you'd give your full name again, so that we'll remember it this time.
Thank you, Alan Gralletta. And I'm not an engineer, I'm a real estate broker. So, thank you for the upgrade. I appreciate the education you gave me, but no. And I just want to clarify, it's Dr. Triana's property, and he has no intention of building any structure there whatsoever. So, other than he might, you know, he has a pension for olive trees, he might put some olive trees back there and do some clearing, as Bill suggests, but no construction whatsoever.
Okay. Very good.
And if you go out there, to follow your point, it's a very treacherous area to try to walk through. I can tell you, because when Bill and I went out there, I surrendered the white shirt with three holes in it from the, you know, the trees that poked through. So, walking out there, it's not something you're ever gonna use, because it's a difficult walk.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate the sale of approximately .6426 acres of city green belt property adjacent to 202 Box Oak, on terms and at a price as determined by the city manager.
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete, we have a second, we have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. Buddy?
Yeah, Bill, I have a couple of questions. My concern is, this will be treated not as a separate lot, but it'll be included in the original plat?
No.
Because we have lot restrictions on lot sizes.
No, it's, right now, this is not a plating action, this is...
No, I understand that. But if we were to sell it, and it was a separate, it would be a separate piece of property, the plat would be different. And so, it would have to be incorporated into the original ownership, otherwise, we're gonna have a lot restriction size issue under .75 acres. And we're also going, we have the setback issues, and I'd hate to see the only lot in Chavano Creek that's below .75. So, I mean, there would be some contingencies that we would need to include for the sale to, for it to be transacted.
And that's a great point, Buddy, and of course, the doctor, as the owner of both tracks, will have the ability to ask Bill to make an administrative plat adjustment to where these are both combined. And I'm going to assume that Bill will be in a position to negotiate that contemporaneously with the completion of the sale, that the application will be made and approved administratively, so that before every, before the ink dries in the attorney's office, that we have whatever we're getting that includes a replat of that property.
Absolutely.
Bill, is that, is that right? Bill, is that, is that right?
Yeah, I, I believe you're right. I think that we can do that. It's very, not too complicated.
Yeah, and, and we can do that now, whereas when, when Conrad was on planning and zoning, we couldn't have done that because we didn't have that authority to do administrative replats for somebody that owned both tracks of property.
Right, and we did that on Northwest Military.
And we did it on Northwest Military.
And in Huntington.
And in Huntington, yes. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Pete?
Hey, Bill, from, from the pictures, is any of that property in the flood zone?
The actual property here, I don't believe is in the 100-year flood zone.
Okay, so it's all flood zone free.
It's above. I mean, we don't think, the, the edge of it might be there, but it's really kind of on that plateau, on that finger. And the flood zone is, I looked at the map, I showed the mayor, in fact, the mayor, and I don't believe, and I'm not going to say none of it is, but very little, if any of it would be in the flood zone, 100-year.
And, and my recollection from looking at the floodplain map, Peter, Pete, is that Bill is correct, but I'm old and he's not. And so I could be wrong, but I'm telling you that I did ask that question and, and we both looked at it as like, no, it's right where we wanted it to be and it's not in the floodplain.
Yeah. And, and then my, the second question I have is, does that piece? So, second question, does that piece of property touch to any other residence's property?
No.
It's just that his, so, so nobody can come in at a later point and say, I didn't have a fair shot at that piece of property?
No.
Okay. And then my third question has to do with a future drainage project. So 100 years down the road, if we were ever to have to do a future drainage project down that because of the, you know, when you look at the Desavala project, we're dumping a lot of water in that almost creek. And so if we were to have to do another drainage project along here, would selling that piece of property now interfere with a potential drainage project down the road?
Well, we have a drainage easement already on that property. We can do whatever we want, but I can't imagine that we would do something there. I mean, you, you potentially could increase the channel of that drainage a lot, you know, between Desavala and Hubner, but it wouldn't affect this property that's being, so, and even if we did, we would have the right to do it. We have the drainage easement to make those improvements.
So how, how far is it easement? How much is it easement?
The whole area is.
The whole area?
The whole, the whole 14 acres is a, is like designated.
There being no other questions, comments, or concerns, we have a motion made by Pete. Thank you, Pete, for your questions. And seconded by Conrad, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. Item 8.3, Discussion Action Ordinance O 2025-011, amending Chapter 20, Article 3 of the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances, provide clear standards for defining and measuring noise nuisance. This is going to be Curtis and Chief. Curtis, do you want to get us started?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So as I briefed last month, when, what, that was just a discussion, we first gave you the first look at what we were proposing. This is coming from the town plan and trying to keep our ordinance up to date, and this was one of the ordinances identified by our police and code that was having difficulty understanding and enforcing and whatnot. So everything that was presented to you last month has been unchanged except two pretty impactful changes, but they're relatively small. And that was a response to questions raised by city council asked of us. So, but again, what are we trying to do with this ordinance? We're trying to establish clear, objective DBA, decibel level limits for the police to measure when determining a noise nuisance, remove these arbitrary criteria as defined throughout the ordinance that it's unreasonable. We want to differentiate noise nuisance levels between commercial and residential, which right now our code doesn't do that. We first presented to you a commercial of 70 DBA and residential of 63 DBA. One thing that you, the council asked us to go and look at our past noise ordinances and see what were people complaining with, when, under the old ordinances, and what were those readings? And the police found when they went back to the previous complaints, that most were measured between 54 and 56 DBA, where the noises measured on the property are nearby right-of-way. So we reduced those thresholds in the residential down to 50, from 63 to 55, and we did the same thing commercial. So that's negative seven effect is negative seven, residential negative eight, negative eight residential, negative seven commercial. And these result in the equivalence of a softer conversation level, which I'll show. And that kind of makes intuitive sense that Chavano Park would be a little quieter than San Antonio. But getting back on track here, the, we, other proposed amendments, we added noise nuisance for vehicle, you know, people blasting music out of their cars, it's coming from San Antonio that wasn't missing in our ordinance, chains, residential blowers to accommodate summer days by sunset instead of a harsh 7:00 PM, escalating minimum fines for repeat offenders, updated reference verbiage. And this goes to another question that came from city council was how are, do police certify, measure, how are they ensuring the device is accurate essentially? So we added some clarifying language that the decibel meters must use in accordance with device manufacturer directions when measuring possible noises, and I'll unpack that a little bit later on. So this is what I presented to you last month. This, this comes from Yale University of a, of these different DBA levels, and I went and explained a little bit how this is measured. But you can see these were coming, we just did San Antonio's, we plugged in ordinances 70, 63. We're now proposing to move down to 63 and 55, which puts us down below around business office suburban area at night, you can see at 40. So we're a little bit in acquired range. So it was just good to me, that intuitiveness, that we got this from San Antonio, but Chavano Park, if people were hearing noise coming from a distant business and it was measured 55 on the property, people have an expectation of acquired neighborhood here. So this is all, all this is existing ordinances. These are today, these are noise nuisances that are identified. We go through and 12 of them are explicit. We added that new one from San Antonio. I won't say all these, but disturbances, commotion, vehicle horns, emergency signals, radios, yelling, shouting, loading and loading merchandise, blowers, commercial establishments adjacent to residential property, construction repair, name it. These are all identified in ordinances as specific noise nuisances. Then it comes back in our existing ordinances language, makes exemptions for noises going on that community, might be normal traffic, emergency utility repairs, emergency sirens, so on and so forth. And this is how the police measured, we added this new language. And a yellow up there highlighted is the new language we added for this first reading from what you saw on the slide previously. In our current ordinances, there was nothing to say how a police officer, you know, I can download a DBA app and put on my phone, and I don't think that's very scientific, but how would they actually do this? So we added that key thing, when the, when the officer measures it, it's accordance with device manufacturer directions. And we added this at the end, and nothing in this subsection shall prohibit the determination of a noise nuisance using the general prohibition factors specified under 2054. And what that's, what we're basically saying is that the police officer will use the, the device with manufacturer directions. It's referencing to this general prohibition, this is all existing language in our code, which is, my way of thinking is regardless of what the device says, there's the basic logic of a police officer. Here are other things that the ordinance says, existing language, that an officer could use to determine whether this is a noise nuisance. The proximity of the sound to sleeping facilities, the land use, nature, the zoning of the area which the town emanates, time of day, of night, sound occurs, duration of sound, whether it's recurrent, intermittent, constant. So the police officer, they have, they get the reading, but they always have this in their back pocket, and this gives, you know, some flexibility with the court and whatnot if this does get to that level for the judge.
Okay. Thank you, Curtis. I, I do appreciate that information. A normal conversation is at 60, according to the website that we looked at, when we considered fences along Northwest Military Drive. Conversation, that's Pete and me just talking. That seems, 55 seems just remarkably low to, to be a number. What did y'all, where, where did you get 55?
So that was in, and across the report, the past reports from residents, when they made complaints to our police and the police measured it, it was 54 to 56, was around their ranges. And those were, all of these were generally coming from businesses outside the city. And so we would be able to contact city San Antonio. But I, I'm no expert in this, but when I think of it intuitively, well, yes, a convers, a conversation's not annoying, but if I'm hearing a sound that's not conversation at the sound level of a conversation, that would be annoying. That would be a nuisance, depending on what the sound was.
So who's going to cite the Katy Dids and the Casat, uh, the Casadas, Casadas? Cicadas, and the Cicadas out there because that, that's actually a lot higher than Conrad.
I think what Mayor's getting at, where do you measure that sound level? Inside the house or at the, at the complainant's ear level?
We, we have in our ordinance that it's out, it's a property, what's the word, not under the same ownership. Measurements may be taken adjacent property or separate ownership from the property generating noise. So the right-of-way, if they can't get access to that property, they measure it from the neighbor's property.
So it's, I assume, assume that you're measuring that from the complainant's ear, which is not next to the conversation. So the, the noise would be actually louder than 55 over there, but it's 55 here, and that's loud enough to complain.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just, you know, we want to have a standard that is the going standard. The standard that keeps us from going to listen to complaints that aren't that loud. And at 60, or at 55, the fact that your neighbor talks at their property line with their husband or wife or their next-door neighbor who's not you at a 60, they're in violation. Well, that actually, that, from a procedural due process standpoint, that actually stretches credulity. You want to have a rule that it, yes, I really commend all of you who worked on this for the objective standard. An unreasonable level of noise was not an enforceable standard. We could never have gotten by with it unless somebody is firing a firearm repeatedly where we're saying, yes, you have certainly violated a community standard of reasonableness. 55 just seems awfully low. Pete?
So Curtis, remind me, I remember the last time that you presented this, one of the things that we were talking about was the ability to align this with other cities. I mean, as you look at Chavano Park, we are surrounded by the city of San Antonio, and it was to ensure that, that our standards were very similar to the San Antonio standards so the rules wouldn't be changing as you drove through. Is that, is that still the case?
Yes. That, um, most of these noises, from my understanding, are not coming from Chavano Park businesses or homes, they're coming from businesses outside. And so if our ordinance has clear standards and it matches that with San Antonio, it makes.
So to clarify a little bit of what Curtis has said initially, the 54 to 56 that we were getting, those are from the businesses across 1604 San Antonio being measured in Chavano Park. If you decided to raise the decibel levels limits from residential and commercial back up to San Antonio standards, that's perfectly fine with us. I think Curtis tried to bring it down a little bit to Chavano Park eyes it a little, maybe it was a little excessive, maybe not. But the decibel readers are going to be used in conjunction with the other prohibiting factors. So one of the things that Alderman Powers asked us about was calibrations. Queried six different cities, got six different answers. And most of them were like, well, we've never calibrated our devices. Most of them are, you know, others were, you know, we go to manufacturer specifications and that's where we gathered that information. But all of them pretty much had one thing in common, which was a standard of the prohibiting factors that they also weighed in on and use the decibel readings as additional evidence if a issue was challenged in court.
I would just say, if you're lying in bed, trying to go to sleep and you can't sleep, and there was a level of music coming that was the sound of someone having a conversation, that would, it would be maddening. And a lot of those people call me first and we were, so it's not, they're not actually people having conversations that the complaints are. The, the, it's music that's continuous and it's at the level, the same level that you would be hearing at the conversation. And so it's, you know, if you look at it, we're not trying to enforce your neighbor having a conversation at the property line. It's another noise at that same level which it becomes a nuisance. That's, that's the way to look at it.
I, I understand that, Bill. The, the question, you know, when we first put in the pavilion and we allow people to have music until 10 o'clock at the pavilion, and then there are people that are having fun and all that, going to the property lines of the people adjacent to the municipal track, you know, we're, we're running a 70 on all of that stuff. And we're allowing that on the municipal track. And now we're saying, but by the way, if you're a residential property, you get a 55, but if the commercial people all get a 63. I, I would think that we want the commercial people to be more quiet than we want our residences, our neighbors, to be because they're our neighbors. Lee?
To that, to that statement, Mr. Mayor, I, I think the fact that a business usually stops at dark or people start partying at dark in their residence, I think there'd be an explanation there. The other point I wanted to make, and thank you, Chief, for reminding me about my question from before about calibration. After you and I had that conversation in, in court, in the city council meeting last time, I spoke to a friend of mine, a well-known attorney by the name of Mario Trevino, he acts as a judge some places, and his comment was, of course, it's got to be calibrated. They have to calibrate the intoxicilizer, unquote. So I'm not, I'm not real sure that if he were ever to hear a case like that, he would be real.
And that's, and that, and not to cut you off, but that's a question that we raised as well. But going back to the fact that they use that in conjunction with the other contributing factors, it's just an additional piece of evidence. Now, if you were to base your whole court case on just decibel readings and you got up and it was challenged in court and you weren't able to prove that that calibration was done, then yes, you'd lose it. But if you're also listening to the complainant tell about how, you know, the music went on straight for an hour, it, uh, I was trying to sleep and I couldn't sleep, it was ruining my, the pleasure of having my house, other factors like that are taken into consideration when the court is done versus just the decibel.
Years ago, years ago at my house in the front yard, I could hear the music from hills and dales. They no longer do that because city of San Antonio got them broke from doing that. Now on Fridays and Saturday nights, I hear music in my front yard, in my, in my house from the pavilion. So I haven't made any complaints, I'm sure it's above the decibel reading because I'm a good neighbor. But again, I think we're gilding the lily here when we've got a penal code section 142.01 that covers this. I'm, I'm not sure that we need to be doing all this. I'll bend to a greater authority, but again, I've worked out of the penal code for so many years, it seems to be sufficient.
Now, we, we have neighborhoods in Chavano Park where we have neighbor hating neighbor. And Craig, and Maggie, maybe you can speak to this better than any of the rest of us because frankly, I get along with all of my neighbors in my particular area. But given the opportunity to take their smartphone out and, you know, here we've had an average ambient noise level from right here of 65, a high of 88 and a low of 41 on my little thing, and everybody's got these apps. If they can walk to the edge of their property along certain streets near Maggie's neighborhood and find a 55, they're going to call. And I'm, I'm just recommending that you guys consider a number where the number of calls that Chief is going to be fielding for the crew goes down instead of up. That it's an objective number and yeah, we can hear the music and you got to stop it. And, and y'all have done really great. I've, I've talked to a family, it's either on Windmill, Bent Oak, or on, on Cliffside, and it's been the same family that does it every single time. And y'all show up for that elderly couple and it stops. Thank y'all for being so responsive. The neighbor's a bad neighbor. That neighbor needs to be shut down. But Maggie, do you want to say anything about your neighborhood and whether you think that this might be something that folks might find as a new excuse to find? something that folks might find as a new excuse to find fault with neighbors?
I'm, um, you know, I'm thinking about this, but there's been a situation in a similar neighborhood that the lots are fairly big, but there are lots of pools. You know, picking, picking up some of these larger lots. One, uh, people wanted to go to bed, but the swimming pool lights shone right in their bedroom window. And there was a, and there was music, uh, and so on, and it was a disturbance to them. Police were called, and then they used the decimal test about they stood right up and the decimal level was not such that it was against our, our rulings. But, as Bill said, it's still, it was a problem to this family. That, I don't know whether they, or what, but anyway, it was their, their bedroom was right next to the pool. But, I don't know whether it was loud music, it was keeping them awake. I mean, all the things, it's keeping you awake, didn't stop at ten o'clock, went on till midnight. And I think finally, the officer said, time to go to bed. But I mean, you know, I don't think, you know, you have to look at neighborliness as opposed to a charm.
Yeah, Pete?
Yeah, so, so I think we've all been on the other end of this issue where, you know, we've had loud noises and they've been disturbing. So I think when we look at this, uh, ordinance, I don't, it's a needed ordinance. I think the, the question that, that has really been raised here is, do we have the right levels? And so I, I, do we have the right levels, the DB levels? So what, what I'd, in the interest of time, because I know we still have multiple things on the agenda, what I'd like to do is say, because I, I made the motion, is that correct? I'd like to say that we table this motion, uh, to allow...
Okay, we have a motion to postpone consideration. Do we have a second on the motion to postpone consideration? Uh, we have a second on the motion to postpone consideration until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Let me clarify that.
Okay.
Is that correct, Maggie, next regularly? Okay, that, that stops conversation. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion to postpone is confirmed five oh, until the next ma- regular council meeting. Thank you very much, Pete. Okay, uh, item eight point four, discussion action, changing the City Hall administrative hours of operation from eight AM to five, to seven thirty to four thirty. Bill?
Yeah, I primarily wanted to review this with City Council, make sure we're being transparent, we're being open about this, and that, uh, that, uh, any changes in city operations are done with full disclosure, and we're not just trying to do this, uh, for any convenience reasons. But just so, uh, just to review the bidding, City Hall is currently now open officially eight to five. Uh, Monday through Friday, court is open from eight to four. And then the permanent office is open eight to one, and then from one to five. In summer months, our ci- our public works, works generally from seven to four. And what we're looking to do is standardize hours a little bit. That doesn't mean there won't be some potential exceptions on, uh, work schedules, et cetera. But we've been looking at this for maybe a year, different options and what we may and may can't do. What we do know is that currently, if you're a citizen and/or a resident and you wanna do business, you have to do it during, what may overlap is your business hours as well. Uh, or you may be able to come during lunch, but you would have to take a lunch and you, from your place of work, that's sometimes hard to do. We thought, uh, for a number, a couple of reasons, but primarily if we opened up at seven thirty, that would allow residents to come do business with the city before eight o'clock, then they can go out about their business, and then they wouldn't have to leave work early or go to work late, et cetera. There's also a lot of, uh, uh, traffic, um, that, that exists for folks that wanted to come back and forth to the City Hall, but, uh, also our employees who, um, often get caught up in that heavy, uh, traffic time. So, we believe for a number of reasons, modifying this schedule from seven to seven thirty to four thirty, and, and there's always exceptions because, you know, we have City Council meetings and we stay late and all that of the stuff, would probably be a good thing, and we would look to implement that August fourth, Monday, August fourth.
Okay. And I commend you for moving the hours up. There are people that are professionals, they leave, they start their business day, and they're not coming home until well after five o'clock. Uh, and coming here during the middle of the day is an inconvenience. Um, I appreciate the fact that y'all are willing to come in at seven thirty. Uh, do we have a motion to approve changing City Hall hours of operation to seven thirty AM to four thirty PM? We have a motion from Lee, we have a second from Pete. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yes?
So one of the things I'm always concerned about is, uh, parents that have children and their ability to get those kids to school. Would this interfere in any way with that? And, and how much flexibility would you give as an op- as the manager?
What? For employees?
Employees, yeah, employees with, with children that need to get their, their, uh, their kids to school.
The, very little impact at all, because we have very few admin, uh, employees that meet that criteria.
Okay. Uh, there being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries five oh. Item eight point five, discussion action, approval of employee group medical, dental, vision, and life insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement. Kristen, you're, you're welcome to talk from there. We just went through a twenty-minute discussion on this entire thing. If you could give us the two minute, two-minute bullets on what we're gonna be doing here. And, because I think that, uh, the consensus in City Council when we left this issue in the workshop was, let's make sure that this happens before it disappears.
Yes, sir, as was discussed in the workshop, the compensation committee is making the recommendation um, to approve curative medical, and that we pay eight hundred and sixty dollars per employee per month uh, with fifty percent dependent coverage. Uh, we continue with Ameritas, with the fifty percent coverage for dependents for our dental and vision, and we continue with standard and fifty thousand dollar benefit for employees.
Okay. Uh, I'll now open this up for a motion to approve for the city manager to, or his designate to enter into a contract for group insurance and to provide for the benefits as set forth.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a motion from Pete, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Buddy. We're now open for discussion. Uh, thank y'all for all your efforts, uh, Pete, Buddy, staff, in getting us to the eight fifty a month. Uh, there are some significant revisions, uh, that are both positive and negative for the staff and for the city. Uh, but probably lean more heavily that the city is getting a good benefit out of this. There being no discussion, comments, or concerns, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries five oh. That's right. I think Conrad and Pete did a fine job as well. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, Buddy, and Buddy, I, I'm thinking that, that Buddy is right there, that, uh, you know, you guys need, uh, four digits, a, a four hundred percent increase in what you're getting this year as your compensation for being on council. Because Buddy has pointed out to me that that can be a zero with a comma and four zero, and three zeros behind that. So I'm, I'm really pleased that, uh, to recommend that, that sour increase for y'all to get a zero with a comma and then three zeros. That's right, that's right. Effective, oh, Maggie.
And one bun cake.
You were, and one bun cake. You are so generous. Okay, uh, brings us to item eight point six, discussion action ordinance oh twenty twenty-five zero one two, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget. This is a first reading. Uh, Bill and Brenda, uh, Brenda, do you want Bill to handle this, or do you wanna come forward? Bill?
Okay, well, every year about this time, we, we've started out with a, a budget approved in September, and we make modifications to the budget in, in accordance with what we can and can't do. But we have a, a number of them that are pri- primarily listed in your agenda item. Uh, almost all of the big ticket number, uh, items you have already previously approved. Some of them have been spent, some of them haven't been spent. For example, the, the water rights, you've approved that previously and authorized me to negotiate that, but there was no monies in the budget. So what we've done is we've just accounted for what has been spent or hadn't been spent, and we made adjustments. I will say that all, um, you had a, a budget comparison, a report in your packet. Your staff summary detailed everything that was, um, that's being proposed to be amended, and the budget remains balanced. And so we were fortunate in some ways in our expenses haven't, um, been fully realized, some expenses, and we've got revenues that were increased, both in court, in EMS fees, in interest fees, and other, uh, fees that, um, that allow us to, to do this budget amendment. So, uh, for, um, if you want me to go through them all, I can. One was a, uh, an engineer task order for Turkey Tree Creek drainage. And that was paid for by development fees related to a, a commercial plat and, and additional increases in investment income. But that is the, uh, that's just the, the work done to not plan, um, another drainage project, but to provide a illustration and scope that so that we can, you know, discuss it with our residents and be prepared to, um, include that potentially in a, in a, in a bond, uh, project later on. So, we, we worked through that. There, there was some adjustments in the Texas Municipal Retirement System expenditure line. That was based upon just a, a spreadsheet era initially in the budgeting that didn't carry on to all departments. We, we only included a few of the departments with, with an increase, and, uh, we worked through that. There were some engineering expenses related to cliffside trail schematics, which weren't accounted for before. Increases in professional services, then engineering, there was some cities IT network, uh, instructors amendments, uh, capital, uh, equipment, computers. Uh, municipal court, we, we're, we're getting more revenue, so we're accounting for that, as well as the fire department, the STRAC loan. We, we, we budgeted an amount, but then we finalized that and we edit that as we get the final amounts coming through here. We received donations from the police department that weren't accounted for, so that's now accounted for. The water, uh, utility fund accounts, as I already mentioned, for potentially buying water rights. And then doing some of the projects that we might need to do in advance for, um, Northwest Military Highway and future, uh, street projects. But I'll, uh, pause there, see if you have any other specific questions.
Thank you, Bill. As far as the motion to approve, uh, is there a reason why this can't be an administrative ordinance?
Yeah, I, I think it is administrative, uh...
It was listed as a first reading, I thought.
Yeah. In our, uh, item description, agenda item description, we had it as amend of, uh, as, as administration. And I think on the proposed motion, we didn't put that on there.
Yeah, and so I'd be looking for an emotion to just approve, uh, not as a first reading. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve ordinance oh twenty twenty-five zero one two, amending the city of Chavino Park fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget as proposed in Exhibit A, uh, as a final reading? So moved. We have a motion from Maggie. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Uh, item number eight point seven, discussion action boards and commission appointment, designation of council subcommittee members to review and provide recommendations. Kristen, thank you for this reminder. Uh, I would entertain a motion to appoint Pete and Maggie to the boards and commission subcommittee? No, I'm, I'm entertaining a motion. Do I have a motion? Oh, I have a motion to appoint Pete and Maggie to the, to the committee subcommission. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Buddy has seconded that. Okay, there, there being no appro- there, there being no, no noteworthy objections, all in favor say aye.
Maggie seconded.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you for volunteering, Pete and Maggie, y'all are, y'all are just the best thing ever. There is sliced bread out there, but y'all are second best of sliced bread. No? Thank y'all very much.
Cause I do, seriously, I'd like to make a comment, is, are we open for a comment?
We've actually gone on to the next agenda item, Pete. You could put it up, you could make a motion for reconsider- to put it back on the table. Thank y'all very much. Item eight point eight, discussion action, setting the dates, oh, uh, setting the dates for the city holidays. Uh, thank y'all for bringing this forward a little bit early to us. Um, we have basically six events, and two of them are pretty well, three of them are pretty well the same day every year. One would be the Saturday before Independence Day.
Sir, this is the holidays, not the city events.
There's two different agenda items.
Oh, two city holidays, I'm sorry, eight point eight, okay.
But we are doing this early because we wanna get in the employee, uh, you know, um...
We have a benefit guide that goes out next week, uh, and we'd like to list the...
Benefit guide.
The holidays as a benefit.
Are there any recommended revisions to the city holidays from prior years?
No, sir, it just shows that, uh, your Thanksgiving Day is Thursday and Friday, your Christmas Eve is Thursday and Friday. None of the days, I believe, had to be adjusted, except Independence Day, July fourth is a Saturday, so we would move forward to the Friday the third.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for that briefing. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six official holiday schedule as presented? We have a motion from Lee, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie, we're now open for discussion. Pete?
So Kristen, I, I know in the compensation committee, one of the things that we talked about was the addition of New Year's Eve. I know you got New Year's Day on here, uh, is, uh, and that's, so that's not included on here?
No, sir, the compensation committee's...
It's in the staff summary as under consideration, but it's not been put on here until the compensation committee actually formally recommends it.
Yes, and if that gets penciled in later.
Okay, thank you very much, Pete. Any other questions or comments? No other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries five oh. Item eight point nine now, discussion action, setting the dates for the city-sponsored events, citywide garage sale, Arbor Day, Independence Day, National Night Out, holiday event. Um, Kristen, we're there again. Uh, several of these events kind of happen according to the calendar every year. And let's just see if we have a consensus on those. Independence Day is the Saturday before Independence Day. Independence Day is a Saturday. Do we wanna bring in all of our staff on that day, or let them be with their families?
Yeah, it needs to be the Saturday before.
The Saturday before, okay. National Night Out is the first Tuesday in October. Well, I don't think we're changing that. The holiday event is the first Saturday in December. Everybody kinda nodded their heads, okay? Uh, trunk or treat is normally Halloween or the Saturday or Sunday before, Sunday before.
Sunday before Halloween.
Sunday before Halloween, unless it's Halloween. So it's Sunday before, so everybody, those are all off the table. That leaves our garage sale date and our Arbor Day, Earth Day event. And, uh, we can see what staff is posting up there. We know when Fiesta is, we don't wanna compete with Fiesta on those events. They have provided on the garage sale for a, the date. And then I think that, that second date would be, what if we have a rain out? Is that correct, Bill?
We can do that, we could do March, uh, okay, the one comment, right? So, one resident did say, hey, don't do that on spring break, which would be March fourteenth. But I'm not sure whether or not, that, I mean, one, that was one comment. I mean, you know, maybe there is a great, uh, maybe that's a common thought and a common feeling. I, I, I don't know, I don't...
If people are taking vacations and they're not there and available to participate.
Or they're not able to put their stuff out.
Right.
Okay, uh, do we want to go with... Okay. Do we want to go with the 21st and the 28th as our dates? And of course, there are, there are different vacation days for different schools. And so the 14th, if that's the Northside Independent School District, and that's what we've confirmed according to Kristen, then we may not want to do that. So the 21st and the 28th as an alternate date? Kind of heads nodding. Arbor Day, Earth Day, the Saturday before Fiesta starts. Is that good for everybody? Okay. So now we have the dates that are provided. We have the garage day, the 21st or the 28th of March. We have Arbor Day on April the 11th. We have Independence Day on June the 27th.
And note that is radio field day again.
I'm sorry.
There, the 27th and the 28th are the radio field day, so we just had the radio club here.
They'll just come in the afternoon, after we do whatever we're going to do. National Night Out is October the 6th. Trunk or Treat is October the 25th, and the Holiday Festival is December the 5th. Do we have a motion for those days? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Buddy. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Brings us to the final item, discussion action review, the budget calendar, setting the dates for the budget special meeting in August. Bill, do you want to repeat the dates that Brenda has provided to us so that we can get a motion?
So there we go. Proposed is Thursday, August 14th at 5:30, special meeting to, where the city manager will propose the budget.
Okay.
Immediately after that, we would then, we would, we would then go into reviewing the no-revenue voter approval and the diminished tax rate calculations. Perhaps do a workshop afterwards.
Okay. And Conrad, you're fine with 5:30? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the date and time for the presentation of the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2026 budget for Thursday, August the 14th at 5:30, and a special meeting to hold the record vote for the fiscal year 2026 tax rate ceiling on Thursday, August the 14th, immediately following the city manager's presentation, or 6:30 if earlier?
That sounds good.
Well, we want to, we want to do back-to-back. We don't want to wait until 6:30. So if earlier, if earlier, and the budget, and a possible budget workshop, number five, on August 25th at 5:00 PM if needed.
Can we go back one slide?
Right?
Okay, that's just a typo where it says Thursday, August 14th, and Wednesday, August 14th.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we've got it covered. Okay, got it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Still move.
We have a motion from Lee, and a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
We have a motion from Maggie and a second from Pete. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned, 5-0.